Okay, it's five thirty and I'm gonna call this meeting of the Alpine City Council to order and ask everyone to rise for the pledges. And we do have a forum and Gio, the proof of the meeting was posted.
Uh, yes, the proof of this meeting was posted by two P M on December four.
And we have any comments?
No, we do not.
And we have no presentations, recognitions, or proclamations. And so our first report is from the city mayor and she will report via Zoom.
Hi, everyone. Just checking to make sure you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay, good. I wish I could be there in person with you guys. I I hate that I'm here stuck at home. Uh, the first part of the mail, mayor report is about process small business develop development center. Um, it's a valuable resource that we have, we have here in our city. It does a lot of trainings and things like that, all for free. There was only one that cost, it's because the the software required a fee. So they had an economic round table that both Megan, the city manager, and myself attended. And they were talking with the Borderplex. And the Borderplex also has a lot of great valuable training that people can take for free. And they went and worked in conjunction with this all were all small business development center or easily recalled S B D C. So, uh, the Borderplex is trying to get a series of courses together so that people can earn a certificate in customer service. They feel like that will help employees within their positions. They'll have a better idea of what's expected of them and so forth. So anyway, they're working with local businesses to find out if they can get some kind of benefit for being part of this customer service training. Like maybe the first interview or something like that. Anyway, so they're looking at the next round table, which will probably be this month, maybe next month. And they're hoping to get more businesses involved and onboard and even people, potential employees. So if you know of any businesses, it might benefit from having people trained specifically in customer service. Um, you might hook them up with the Small Business Development Center. The second thing on the mayor report was about the water leak. And I just wanted to give everyone a big thank you. I am so proud of Alpine and how we all pulled together and worked together in such conditions. Boiling water is not necessarily fun, but we all worked together and we got through it. Uh, some citizens also had posted on Facebook that they had wells and they were welcoming anybody who wanted to come to their well and get water to do so, which was very kind. Our residents here are second to none. Also, several city um council members and citizens stopped by to encourage the team to keep them going. And um some of them even brought hot chocolate and coffee and pecan pies and stuff like that. Anyway, I see this event as a need for us to pull together as city council and as residents and look at repairing our aging water infrastructure. I know we've been doing that. But we need to get on to this as soon as possible, I think, because we're gonna have more situations like this occurs time goes on. And of course, our aging wa- uh wastewater treatment plan, as we've all talked about. I also wanted to give a huge thank you to the gas employees who were out that same weekend. I believe one of them had helped the water department when they were out with the water leak. But gas employees were also out there making sure everyone, all residents had the gas they needed to stay warm. And not only that, um, you have your dispatchers, your law enforcement, your fire, your E M T. All of those individuals who work on holidays a lot of times as a wife of a thirty year law enforcement officer. I remember giving up holidays and the sacrifice wasn't just for the employee, but also for their family. And information about the boil water notice went out in several ways. We were trying to reach as many people as we could. Uh, there was a notice on the city website, uh Alpine P D posted it on Facebook. There were other notices on Facebook on the various community pages. Dr. Reinhardt volunteered to help out, so we have formed a a good partnership with them and she used the school's uh text messaging system called Remind One O One or Remind to send out messages to everybody who is associated with A I S D from parents to teachers to students, everybody that we had a boil water notice, so that was very helpful. We also posted flyers at Porter's and True Value. Gio went out there and and put um the flyers there for them to put on their doors and at the cash registers. And Stephanie Elmore from Brewster County, she's our Brewster County Emergency Management Coordinator. She sent out a hyper reach message, which is like reverse nine one one. And hyper reach, what happens is you would get text messages or you could get emails. I got mine via email. And they will let us know when there's some kind of emergency. So she sent that out to everyone to let them know that we were under a boil water notice. Now, the thing with hyper reach is you need to register for it. And so, uh, the information for how to register for it is on the Brewster County, Texas website. And it's hyper reach and Gio, the city secretary, is also gonna put it on our website under how do I? So you can go there too. But the web address for that is Brewster County text dot com backslash hyper uh dash reach backslash. And so it's up on the screen right now so that everybody can get that information. It's quick, it's easy to sign up for. And if there's anything that you need to know, such as a boil water notice or any other kind of emergency, that is what we're doing. Now, one resident also suggested that maybe we should use the sirens to let people know to tune into the radio, which is another method that we used to get the notification out that we had boil water notice. So that's something that we need to discuss on the use of sirens and if that's possible and what everybody's thoughts are. All right. And then the last item, town halls and strategic planning priority workshops. Uh, we, we have raw data from those that I'm sure the city manager is gonna tell you about in her her presentation. So we have the raw data and I had a lot of citizens that thought it was wonderful that we had these on different days and at different times, because it's hard for some to be at a meeting on Tuesday at five thirty. So when we spread out those days and enable more people to come. So I received a lot of uh feedback from citizens who are very grateful. I just want council to know. And also, we have the strategic plan prioritizing workshops coming up. And I'm sure the city manager will tell you more about that on January twelfth and January twenty six in the camp council chambers. So anyway, I just wanna say thank you guys for everything you're doing, for your hard work and for pulling together during our boil water notice. I think it went very well. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor, and I hope you get to feeling better. And I'm gonna add to her report and thank Chief LaSoya for what he and the police department did in distributing uh free water that I think was donated by the food pantry.
Yeah, let's say the food pantry.
Food bank. So that was really a nice thing that uh you could go by the police department and they would uh there was a lot of water there. I don't know how many cases you had a lot.
One thousand four hundred and thirty.
Okay, we uh then we'll move on to the city attorney's report and we don't have one of those this evening. So then we'll move to the city managers' report and I think it's your turn.
I wanna thank everyone who's here tonight. Um, so I think it's kind of gonna be a theme in the thinking and recognizing our employees. I specifically wanted to take the time to recognize them individually um by name so that people understood who was out there and what was going on. It wasn't just water. Um, because of that lovely Arctic blast, as they labeled it, that came through Thursday and Friday and the temperature is dropping really low. Um, if you remember, we started twenty twenty-two uh with an emergency gas issue. Had to do a couple um ordinance updates to the budget with, hey, we're spending money. Um, our gates went down. People don't have that gas pressure. Um, they worked diligently to to maintain it the whole month of January. Well, as a precaution, um, we're still going through those repairs. Um, Victor Muniz, Andrew Chavez, and Tony Vada, all three of them are gas employees who actually spent there's a holiday vacation in Fort Davis in Alpine. Um, they noticed the drop in pressure um towards the north um part of town and they they responded to it immediately. They were out there two, three, four, five o'clock in the morning to ensure that we all had our toasty warm homes. And those phone calls weren't coming in. So I always say that, you know, we don't ever hear about the gas unless it explodes. Don't ever want that to happen. Water is very visible. Uh, you can't miss a water leak. It's very visible where it's gas, not so much. So I wanted to take the opportunity to thank them um personally with the council as a whole and the public that, you know, at night they were out there making sure we stayed warm in our homes, but they didn't just stop there. Um, I hope everyone enjoyed their their Christmas holiday and at two o'clock, my phone started ringing with, hey, I think we have a problem. Um, it it was kind of like, what do you mean? You don't have pressure. Um, I unfortunately spent my holidays sick. And so when I started getting those phone calls, I was just like, oh, my God, something's bad. Of course, um Johnny Marcus, one of the water employees gets on the skater system and yeah, we have a leak, but no one's reported it. Don't know where it's at. And then we were fortunate, someone drove by the D E A building and saw the Olympic sized pool starting to form and made that phone call. Um, we have a great team and and they work hard, especially on a holiday. So personally, I wanna thank J T Garza, Anthony Marcus, Dominique Rubio, Diego Monclova, Miguel Sotelo, Johnny Marcus, Aaron Latta, Victor Muniz, and Andrew Chavez with the gas department. And of course, Keith Seeger, our director. They spent their holiday out there trying to isolate, narrow it down, um dig it up, get it repaired as fast as they could. Um, the pipe did not freeze, um even though we did have that cold come in. Unfortunately, with the bedding and over time, the the rocks did get disturbed and and they cracked eight and a half feet of pipe. So it wasn't just a little leak that we could have, oh, we'll wait till Monday. No, it was a huge leak that we had to take care of. Um, but they weren't the only ones out there. Um, everyone knows law enforcement doesn't sleep. They don't get the opportunity to, though, I'm not gonna work today. Um, we have them there twenty-four seven, but they were also out there. They brought the light system so that the guys could work through the dark um to the point where it 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 just wasn't gonna happen. They couldn't work anymore. But they also checked on the site throughout the night for us to make sure nobody messed with or or got into that and and made any additional damage to it. So they went out there and checked on it regularly for us. Um, one of the officers brought colachies. Um, so as part of the community and part of the team, it was great to have them also step up. So I'm really proud that as everyone has said, we've worked together as a team to address that. Um, Judy Stokes and Jerry Johnson were both out there. I know the mayor was out there as well, checking on them. And, you know, everyone's mentioned the community did come together. Um, we did, Rick Stevens did stop by and drop some coffee off. We had people drop off half chocolate and bottles of water. Um, Judy brought them pizza. Um, anything and everything just to keep their spirits up because it's hard. It's the holiday. And and social media doesn't always make it the best. And so it's a little discouraging when you're trying to do your best and the criticism that sometimes comes with it. So I wanna thank each of those departments for making sure that our holidays um were as as pleasant as they could be. Um, I enjoyed my warm home and I enjoyed what water pressure did come through and and then I, you know, could boil and drink my water. And we hope that it doesn't happen again. Um, it is one of those, you know, we need to plan for the future. Um, which comes into my strategic mind. It's not the city. Um, I will always say mine, guys. Um, the strategic plan. Um, over the holidays, I gave the council some reading material. Um, it was just basically all the raw data, all the information that we've collected from um all of the town hall meetings with, okay, this is what's being said. Um, we did group it into the different categories. Marcy's done an excellent job with that. And starting January twelfth, it's having those discussions, um the directions that we wanna go. Um, we all know that all of the wants and needs of Alpine is easily seventy, eighty, a hundred million dollars. Um, we know we don't have that kind of money. We know that we need to plan to either start investing into to making these improvements, um looking at debt, looking at trying to raise taxes. It's nothing that anyone wants to do. It's a decision that no council member up here wants to make. But we also wanna listen to our residents and we know that we have infrastructure that needs to be replaced. We know that we have employees and, you know, addressing them and how do we keep them and how do we ensure that they have those benefits to doing their job? I mean, I know that if Christmas Day, we have what we had, I I want them to be, you know, a little benefit to that. Um, so January twelfth is our first meeting. It is here. Um, they're all gonna be here at at the council chambers at five thirty. Um, we'll actually just start kind of with a simple introduction of this is the material. Um, we'll address each of the different categories. Came up with a kind of a game plan. Um, what do we wanna prioritize first? Um, do we wanna go outside of city, inside of city? Um, for those of you don't know, our water lines aren't all in the city. Um, we have Muske's, which runs from Jeff Davis County all the way into town. Um, it cracks on occasion. Um, looking at those, looking at our wells, looking at inside, east side, north side, west side, south, um how do we wanna address it? Um, it's not just water and wastewater. Um, how many of you have a lovely street cut on your road? I've got thirty-two of them. I count them, only because when I go over them, I don't have to worry about someone speeding down the road. Um, but having that, working together with our street department. So if we're gonna come in and redo our infrastructure, making sure we're equipped to handle the road repair as well. I'd hate to spend millions of dollars, have this beautiful infrastructure put into place, and as soon as you're out there driving, you're hitting those pipes because we haven't come in with that road. The city has worked on that for years and years and years, um trying to coordinate accordingly. Um, sometimes it just doesn't go. Um, one department has a better plan than another department. So this one is a team effort to to get those put together. I'm also looking at employees. We got a lot of feedback on, you know, what can we do for employees? What type of benefits? Look at the raise, how to re- retain them. Um, it's a, it's a big deal. Uh, if you heard my radio show, that that one is one of my priorities that I'd like to see for myself get accomplished is having that employee benefit package. I know Greg Kennettine sitting back there, but I want people to come work here, not the county. I want us to be the first. Um, and it's hard. We do, we compete with each other. But I I take a lot of pride in our city and and what we do, and I want them to have that same eager um excitement to come work here. So that's also on the list. And then, of course, all of the other items that came with it, um economic development, um oh, there's a long list, guys. It's a little bit of everything and and getting that put together and that actually will help guide us into the budget. It will also help guide us with grants to see the direction we wanna go and what money's available. Um, it will help guide us if we do wanna go out for bonds, if we wanna go out um and borrow and those type of things. The last item on my list, and I I wanted to throw this in there, um I am really grateful for all of our employees and and our directors and and what we've done as a team over the past year. And the one thing that I'd like to focus and bring it to everyone's attention is our employee training. Um, it is hard when you you walk into a an organization and it's like, okay, I I'm here to learn. I'm here to get a job. I'm gonna be better for my family. And it's like, okay, well, here you go. Good luck. We're gonna throw you in there. Um all of our departments, one of the their goals this past couple months is employee training. Um, I think it's really important that we do have a structure in place so that we know. Um, we have departments who have specific licensing that they have to have in order to stay employed. But we need to ensure as a city that we include them in that and get them the training and get them the resources to continue with the city. It's really hard. And a prime example um is last week. I made the decision to close City Hall to the public to allow our customer service clerks and finance team to get customer service training. Um, nobody likes when we close the building because, hey, I had got things I need to get done. I had, and I need you to answer the phone. I need you. But we also have been hearing a lot of complaints about needing better customer service. Well, the one way to train and get better customer service is to have the training for them. So we utilize a lot of online resources to provide them that customer service training, and we didn't look at it just from a city perspective. Customer service is unique amongst all of the industries. They're all slightly di- different. I would love to hire someone from Chick-fil-A to come do customer service here. I mean, if you've ever been through a Chick-fil-A there, thank you, thank you, thank you, and you go through real fast. Um, but we utilize what we could. Um, and we had different industries come in and and do presentations for us and, you know, the one individual who he doesn't report to anyone. All of his customer service is interaction on the phone. He doesn't have a public interface. Um, we utilize T M L, which is the Texas Municipal League, um and utilize their online training as well. Customer service entails more than just answering the phone and asking or answering a question. Um, and we started to provide that guidance for them so that when we started getting more of the public in and more of that interface, um, we have better customer service. Um, we do listen and and we want our employees to get the information and the knowledge as well. With that being said, all of their departments have planned training for their employees over the next nine months. When we pull an employee out for training, it does make us short-staffed. So it's understanding that we're trying to train our employees to do a better job for you, which means there may be days where we have to say, no, we can't get that done today. We've got, you know, two people instead of the regular four. But I think it's really important, um as council is aware, but also the public's aware, um we have a very big schedule of training. Um, not only does the train entail items such as customer service, um but it's the required state law cybersecurity, sexual harassment, ethics training. Um, on the job training in regards to their licensing, um T C Q does regulate our employees. They have to have a D license, a C license, a V, up to an A if they wanna go for it. So we've got a schedule put in place to start getting them that direction. Randy's team, unfortunately, January, a cold month. Um, not next week, but the week after, will be in training in Marfa. Um, they are required by Railroad Commission to have their trainings every three years. So their whole department gets trained together. We are very fortunate that the gas department also has two, not one, not a halftime, not a bar, two full-time employees who are certified welders, which means they can weld on our gas lines. Nothing I would ever want to do. Um, it would scare me, but we have two. When Fort Stockton and when Martha and them need help, they call us. We don't call them. So it's really great to have them, but we wanna make sure they get that training. Our police department. Um, you, and I'm I'm gonna spoil your report, Darryl. Every month, he is pushing his officers to do better and to get the training and to get the certifications. And I know in the back of his mind, because it's in my mind, is they're gonna leave. They're gonna get better and and they're gonna find that one city who's gonna snatch them up and pay them more. But I'm proud that we're the ones who provided the training. We're the ones who set them up to better themselves, and that's important. Um, animal control, you know, getting those officers, they are certified, believe it or not. We have certified animal control officers. So each of the departments are moving forward with very specific trainings um to improve their red or their employees and help our residents more. So I wanted to put that out there. If you see some of the department opening and closing to allow for the training and 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 taking the time to better themselves. And of course, you know, we get excited. Um, in March, when Caitlyn got her B, Caitlyn Hardy, it was, it was exciting. First time since I'd been employed with the city, we had a D license. Um, they're they're hard to come by. And and she she grabbed that up under the city of Alpine, so it it was, it was an honor to to be there for it. So I wanted to get that out before council. Um, so you guys are also aware, when you kind of see the notices come up, that this office may be closed. It's because we really are moving forward with our employees.
Y'all have any questions for Megan? You have any questions, Mayor? She can hear. Okay, we'll then move on to our city staff reports and we'll start with the Alpine Police Department. Alpine Police Department.
He's on call, so he's gonna go work.
Okay.
Randy was gonna give it on your behalf.
Right? I was trying to organize my file here. So, uh, hello, good evening, Happy New Year. Uh, yes. Um, all right. Ever since I've wanted to work for the police department, ever since I've been working for this police department, always wanted a a Christmas photo. So we got our first Christmas photo uh of our staff. We missed a couple of the night shifters in there. Uh, that's all the uh our police officers and uh and we have our new recruit that we're trying to get him through the test, and so hopefully we'll have him hitting the streets here pretty soon. But, you know, we have our dispatch staff on there. We completed our Blue Santa and we paid a special visit to our our friend Sunshine. Uh, he's always on our on our Christmas list and uh oh, we have a new person in Alpine. His name is uh, I'm gonna ruin it for, uh, his name's Cliff Bailey. And so he is our Blue Santa. He's a retired police officer out of Dallas. He does not wanna work as a police officer anymore, but he's willing to help out any way he can. And so we're happy to have him uh as our Blue Santa. His wife Julie also assisted us, and so uh they're a great treat to have. Kind of freaky because he looks a little bit like Russell Scound. But uh, but it's a good thing. Uh, real happy to have him.
He goes like Russell Scound.
Um, we had our our Christmas parade. It went really well, surprisingly, because we came up with it last minute after we didn't have anybody to step up to do the the Christmas parade. Uh, and wonderful Heatherie Aiden, who just put everything together and uh made the visitor center a uh a great place to to have uh the event. And uh she helped with the parade and and uh we took care of that and it went real well. I wish we now, I wish we would have had some prizes for the the floats because like Rio Grande Electric, they went one hundred percent. It was awesome. Uh, some of the new new programs we got going, uh, what's your nine P M routine? Understand, some people do go to sleep at six P M. So if you wanna change your six P M routine, good, make your six P M routine. But we want people to start locking their shelves, uh locking their doors, uh locking their cars up. Um, most of, most of our uh burglaries and thefts are crimes of opportunity here in Alpine. Very rarely do we find somebody who forces their way into a house. Uh, they'll check doors and we want people to make this part of their nine P M routine. Uh, lock the doors. Uh it's something that I do. I hop my wife's car until until it honks. My daughter's car until it honks and I can sleep, sleep at ease, right? I'm a hard sleeper. Um, and so when dispatch calls me in the middle of the night, I have my phone turned up. And so I can hear it. And so it's important to, we want the pe- the people of Alpine to have a a routine at night to lock their doors. Oh, we continue with our Operation Front Porch. It's been going on for over a year now. We we started this in twenty twenty-one and uh where people have their packages sent to the police department. Uh, if they're gonna be out of town or if they just trying to hide the gift from their husband or or so uh and we still have people uh having their packages sent over the year. And and it's not only for the people of Alpine. We do for the outskirts, uh South Brewster County, and when they come up, get their groceries, they'll come pick up their packages. So it's a good, good program. Uh, better than leaving it on the front porch. Okay, we finished uh also our Great Pumpkin giveaway. Thank you to Porch for providing four hundred pumpkins. Uh, and it was a great event as well. Appreciate uh y'all who attended there. It was great to have it uh the community to get together and uh we'll continue to to do as much as we can for our community. Red Ribbon Week is always the the last week of uh October. We went to do our our presentations to the schools. Got some of the officers that don't like normally speaking to public, uh so got them to talk out there and it was a good event. Uh, elementary school, middle school. And uh it all falls in line with with uh Halloween safety, so we we combine the two Halloween safety red ribbon programs. Okay. Uh, also for October, we have our, we had our uh Zuzu Memorial Walk and candlelight vigil. Uh, we walked from the university down Saw Ross into the courthouse gazebo. It was a great event. It was uh touching to see some of the stories that that they talk about. Uh, again, we memorialized Zuzu uh who was killed in twenty sixteen. All right, Corporal White Topless, this kid never ceases to amaze me. Uh, he works hard. All right, Corporal White Topless, this kid never ceases to amaze me. Uh, he works hard. Uh, he loves night shift for some ungodly reason. But, uh, he, he is a certified Texas Association Property Exam Evidence Technician. Uh, it was something that I was pushing for him. And for another officer, that's, that'll be the next slide, but, uh, he's also doing his, uh, drug abuse, uh, investigations. Uh, interdiction. He is a great all-around officer. Uh, when you see, uh, an officer with his stature, with his, with his, uh, presence, it just, it's everything that you want in a police officer. Good kid. Uh, Officer Cardina Legarete, they went to training together. Uh, again, it's called TAPE, it is the acronym for it, uh, TAPE Conference there in San Marcos. It's something that, uh, Lieutenant Kaufman has been running, uh, for some years now. And he's happy to, to slowly, uh, loosen the reins and letting them take over. And so, uh, she's also updated updated forms for us as far as the police department, as far as evidence, uh, the way we do things, uh, procedures, updated the forms, makes them look real professional. Officer John Subia, uh, if you remember probably last year about this time, I was, uh, I did a presentation on, uh, Topless and, and Legarete, uh, they're, they were A R I D certified. So I'm gonna be bringing up Subia. Subia has been with us almost a year now. Uh, he was A R I D certified just recently and he is a, uh, he's a transfer from that we, that we stole from the university. And so, uh, we're slowly getting him, uh, aligned with what we do. Okay. Uh, we have new telecommunications officers, Andrew Pierce and Alexis Arandades. Andrew just recently certified as a basic operator. Uh, and Alexis is waiting to take his test for it. And so, um, we're happy to build our staff and to make them, uh, professionals in, in what they do. Okay. So to rain on my parade, as, as Megan put it, um, I'm really proud of, of my staff because, uh, they want to make themselves better. They want to make our department better. And that's one of the things that I push for them, uh, when I do their evaluations and when I do their growth plan is to make them better all-around employees for the city. It's very rarely that a dispatcher will stay as a dispatcher as a career. For one, it's, it, it can be kind of stagnant. But, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement made, uh, dispatchers first responders. And, uh, and to see dispatchers, telecommunications become, uh, professionals in their career and, and moving forward. Alexis is our third dispatcher in the Alpine Police Department that has continued her career and promoted and to work for Borbito. She's gonna be working. Probably, she's gonna be making a lot more money. As a, as a dispatcher. And with, with half the stress that I put on her. And so, uh, uh, she moved from, from Louisiana to Alpine to follow her husband and her, in his career. And, uh, when I first started talking to her, she wanted to become a, a police officer. She had gotten a degree in criminal justice and, uh, and so that was her, was her goal. Um, she quickly promoted to a supervisor in dispatch to running, y'all remember her presentation here for you. Excellent. I mean, there's nothing, what else could I ask? And, uh, to have her move on as a dispatcher with Borbito is, uh, is great. Um, so Alexis Arandades is, I'm sorry. Alexis Hayman is gonna be working as a, a Borbito dispatcher. Uh, I don't know if you, if y'all remember Julian Torres, who was working with us as a dispatcher. He's working for Borbito. Uh, as a dispatcher. Glenn Marcus started with me back in ninety-three, or I'm sorry, with ninety-four as a dispatcher at the police department, and he's been with them for over twenty years. And it's a great career that they have and, and, uh, it's, it's something that they can be proud of and build on it. Okay. Um, now with the boring stuff, uh, statistics, all right, we have, uh, for October, we had seven hundred seventy-seven dispatch calls, six hundred, six hundred and eleven officers called for service, thirty-three case reports, one hundred sixty-three traffic stops, two hundred and fifty-nine-one calls. Uh, November, we had seventy, seven hundred twenty-five dispatch calls, five hundred seventy-three officer calls for service, forty-five case reports, one hundred fifty-one traffic stops, two hundred twelve-nine-one calls. And it's just, I couldn't finish December until I got my numbers today. Uh, I have, for your information, uh, we have, we had five hundred two dispatch calls, uh, five hundred seventeen calls for service, thirty-four case reports, one hundred fifty-one traffic stops and one hundred eighty-five nine-one-one calls.
And Alexis is gonna miss all of this.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, this morning I was just like, hey Alexis, I need my reports. So, uh, she, uh, yeah, she's gonna be greatly missed and, uh, but like I told you, however I can make my officers, my dispatchers, my, my, my workmates better, I'm gonna do it. So, uh, if they leave me for a higher-paying job, then so be it, but they're gonna be better at it. Any questions?
Thank you, Darryl. You all have any questions?
If I can add, it's just something, I'm, I'm sure y'all heard the press release this morning, uh, on the radio station. I'm sure Carol will have something on, on the newspaper on Thursday. We had a little, uh, situation on, uh, this past Friday over at the Dollar General uh, on the east side of town, which led into the Maverick, uh, Hotel. Everything was handled. Excellent. I, I watched the videos and, uh, I'm very proud of my guys. Uh, Andrew kept me in, informed the entire time, uh, as I was traveling back for San Antonio. And, uh, again, uh, textbook. Good job. Thank you.
Mary, do you have any questions for Darryl? Okay, well, thank you, Darryl. We appreciate it. And our next presentation will be the Building Services from Andrew. Second, what Darryl was talking about, just everything, try to make Alpine better, better your employees. That's what we're trying to do here. That's what I'm learning here when I came from Baytown too. So with that, how to go out of order here, I'm not gonna dive into all the specifics. You have the packet showing our numbers for permits, but it's been a good, good fall here since last time I talked to you in September, a couple of ups and downs. We've been extremely busy with me being new contractors, homeowners, looking for my expectations. What we're happy are just try to do everything the like, the right way to protect the citizens of citizens Alpine. So it's been good. Our numbers have gone up. Of course, it's kind of the slow season, December, which is normal throughout the city, throughout the state, so. We've had some good numbers there. Adelina passed her test for code enforcement, so now we have two verified code enforcements. I'm sure everybody's going around town. We're looking for highways. We're looking for substandard. We're just trying to do everything we can to make Alpine safe for everybody. Um, so that's good there. And next thing, that's on my agenda, how Darryl and Megan, we're, we're going over our group plans. That's gonna be mine as well as being certified building official as well. So just keeping, keep that, keep there now with the fire hazards that we know wind happens every day and that's the last thing we want, whether it be fireworks, cigarette butts, anything. We don't want something catching fire on a mountain or something that could that could go down. So, you know, we're, we're still on the lookout for that. Trying to do our codes, as you can see, it's a action item, item tonight, a revision on our scheduled permit fees, our law code and ordinances. And what I was doing is just trying to get them up, so we don't have a specific year number that we have here. A lot of the codes have changed since the last quote-unquote updated, but there's not a set year that we go by. So if you do have contractors coming from Midland, Odessa, Dallas, Houston, some of them don't know what health cycle we're under, so now it's more uniform. That would be, they could look on our website, give me a call, whatever they need to do. They know our expectations. So just to kind of streamline, we want customers to bring in business staff and we want the homeowners to get the permit, whether it be remodel, water heaters, we're just trying to do things the right way and it's just that open communication we have with them. So with the updated Bs, Ben's permits could be cheaper. We've, I've gotten a lot of feedback from that. So, you know, just adjusting these schedules as we see that would actually help the homeowners that are trying to do the right thing, make their homes better, so making more advantageous for them, so. And we have our numbers, uh, if y'all want to go over them, line item, we can, but it's, they're going up and if y'all have any. Trying to keep it short and sweet for you. Mary, you have any question for him?
No, just thank you. I appreciate everything you do. And I was trying to unmute fast enough to also be able to tell Darryl the same thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you, and appreciate it. And our next report is our City Finance Department and that's Alicia.
Greetings to all. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We present to you the Finance Department Report. And today I have for you the summary of revenues and expenditures as of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And October is the first month of the, of the year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And this report is going to comprise of eight percent completed, uh, for revenues and expenditures. In the general fund, the, uh, the budgeted amount for revenues and expenditures is five million eight hundred and three thousand two hundred and forty-seven. We have actually received two hundred and twenty-one thousand thirty-one dollars, which is three point eighty-one percent of the budgeted amount. In expenditures, we have paid out three hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and is six point one-three percent of the budgeted amount. In the Water, Wastewater and Sanitation Utility Fund, the budgeted amount for revenues expenditures is five million six ninety-eight, two hundred and sixty-four. We have actually, uh, received three hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. That is six point seventy-one percent of the budget. In expenditures, we paid out a hundred and sixty-seven thousand one forty-two, and that's two point nine-three percent of the budgeted amount. The Airport Fund revenues is budgeted as, uh, seven sixty-one, two hundred and four. We have received fifty-one thousand five fifty-nine, which is six point seventy-seven percent. In the expenditures, we paid out ninety-seven thousand one hundred and nineteen, and that's twelve point seventy-six percent of the budgeted amount. The Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund is, uh, budgeted at revenue six hundred and fifty and the expenditure seven eighty-two, three ninety-eight. The difference will be made up from the, uh, fund balance. I'm sure you will. You would have caught that, but, uh, the actual revenues in the hotel tax fund, we have collected or received a hundred and fifty-four dollars as of October thirty-first. That's point oh-two percent of the budget. And we have paid out forty-seven thousand three sixty-six, and that's six point oh-five percent of the budgeted amount. In the Gas Utility Fund, we have, uh, budgeted for revenues and expenditures, two million, two hundred and seventeen thousand. We have received nine-three thousand three hundred and four. That's four point twenty-one percent of the budgeted amount. And we have paid out a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. That's five point zero-one percent of the budgeted amount. In the Interest and Sinking Fund, the revenues and expenditures budgeted, a hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventeen. We have received three, three thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's two point forty-nine percent. And we have paid out, uh, zero for that. And I did want to, uh, let you know that since it's the first month of the, the quarter and the, the fiscal year, you might see some, in your package, you will probably see some, some items that might have gone a little bit higher. And that is because we've paid out, uh, annual subscriptions. We've paid out workers' comp and insurance liability insurance pay premium. So, you know, those, if you look at those in your packets, they might be a little bit higher. My report is very short. It's my first report and thanks to Megan. Uh, I did want to let you know that the city is off to a good start, a very good start. We have a new finance department. We have today hired a new accounts payable clerk. Her name is Sandra. And we have Clarinda. It's been there three months. She is, uh, taking care of account receivable and payroll. And then we have Amanda in the gas collections. She's been there over three months. And then, of course, Lupita and Carmen have been there longer and I've been here five months and I'm really enjoying the ride and I have a lot to learn. It's a big job, but Megan's right there and with your all's help, it's gonna be great and I appreciate everything.
I told you October's report was the easiest. The rest are
Does anybody have any questions?
You have any question? Mary, you have any questions?
I don't. I just want to tell Megan, don't scare her off by telling that.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you.
Well, then we'll move on to the public hearings portion of the agenda. And our first public hearing is a public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero one. An ordinance amending chapter eighteen, building and building regulations to the Alpine Board of Ordinances. Any public comment? And we'll move to public hearing number two, which is a public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero three. An ordinance amending the Alpine Code of Ordinances, amending chapter twenty-six, civic and cultural affairs and facilities, and establishing Article Three Noise, adopting an ordinance providing for requirements and regulation concerning noise and its potential to become a public nuisance. And are there any public comments? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Please come to the podium and identify your name and your ward you live in.
I'm Pam Gaddis and I'm in Ward One. And I'm sorry that I don't know enough about decibels to evaluate the effectiveness of the proposed ordinance in reducing noise, but I do want to say that I'm very strongly in favor of limiting noises. I live approximately eleven blocks from the Crystal Bar, so a large portion of Alpine lives even closer. Uh, and in the summer, I go to bed about ten o'clock and there have been many, many times when their outdoor music has made it very, very difficult for me to fall asleep. And that is even though I have used the most sound-blocking earplug that I can find. In the summer, I, I do prefer to sleep with my windows open to let cool air in, but I don't think that's an unreasonable that I want to keep that option. I believe that sleep is a requirement. It's not, uh, it's a requirement for good health and I would really like to see that loud music level be reduced. I don't think it's, I think it's more than a nuisance that not be able to sleep properly. Can I make one more little comment about, uh, the, the boiled water notice?
You would be out of order.
That'd be out of order. I just wanted to say thanks, that was the mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments? Well, then we'll move to public hearing number three, which is a public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero three. An ordinance amending chapter two, administration, Article Six, records management, providing for a reasonable limit on the amount of time to be spent without charge for vescacious public information requesters and requiring payment for the time and expenditures incurred beyond this limit. And are there any public comments? And then we'll move to public hearing number four, which is a public hearing to obtain citizens' views and comments regarding a short-term rental special use permit applications. And are there any public comments? And we'll move to the agenda item, which is item seven on your agenda. It's a consent agenda. And the first one is to approval of the December sixth, two thousand And the first one is to approval of the December sixth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Number two is approval of the excused absence of councillor Tandy from the December sixth, twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting. Number three would be the approval of the excused absence of councillor Stokes from the December second, sixth, twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting. Number four, approval of the appointment of Matthew Walter to place six position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Number five being approval of the appointment of Susie Gonzalez to the place seven, that's an at-large place, position on the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee. Number six would be approval of the appointment of Alicia Fernbaugh to the place one, which is a hotelier position on the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee. And number seven would be approval of a short-term rental special use permit application at twelve oh one East Avenue F. The property owner of record is Eric and Amanda Lloyd. Now we entertain a motion for the consent agenda. There are second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. And the motion passes. So then we'll move to agenda item number eight, which is information or discussion. And the first one is emergent air quarterly report.
And Walter Carpendall's here.
Okay. Thank you, Walter.
Good evening, everyone. So I sent in a copy. You guys should have a copy. We had in in this last quarter, we had three hundred and seven total calls. In that, we had fifty adults trauma calls. Over that three months with one pediatric. The medical calls, we had two hundred and forty-seven adults and nine pediatric. Some of that was ours. We give you there again. And so we had a bunch of kids that we were transporting there. Our average response time in the city, the city calls is eight point four seven minutes. Our scene times were nine point eight eight minutes. That's the average of all three hundred and seven calls. We had three dead on scene. And thirty-five times we had the second truck calling for emergency for emergency calls. With that, we the number of times that we bypassed the hospital, and this is whenever we either went to a helicopter to the airport, was three times in that quarter. And we had staff, you know, ninety-eight percent. This is the first time we found below a hundred. And we had a we got all of our stuff got knocked out pretty hard by COVID. That was strictly the second truck. And that was one person from the second truck was missing. We still had the primary truck and one person to first respond. But but we did not have full staffing on that second truck for about four days throughout the quarter.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On your response times and your scene times, how do your times compare to, say, the average? And I realize average in Dallas is probably different than Alpine, but a small town.
So so with response times, what most people are looking for is about eight minutes response time in the city. Now ours are going to be a little bit higher because one of the things we discussed whenever we first started was doing away with nine-one-one or with emergency response to non-emergency level calls. So if I have a stub toe, to get the the eight-minute response times, everybody runs lights and sirens to that, super dangerous. So the national trend is that we, you know, we try and prioritize and and not respond with lights and sirens, big ambulance, small town, small intersection. So that's one of the reasons that we're going to be over what what the national response time that they wish would be eight minutes. But again, we've adjusted how we respond. If it's a if it's a chest pain, uncontrolled bleeding, unconscious, unknown, possible stroke, those we go emergency to. If it's anything other than that, right now, we we are probably responding still to about sixty-five percent of those lights and sirens. And and I'm reviewing those to see if we could come down on that. It really does save increase the safety for the community and for for our staff, but bit more for the community. We're driving big huge ambulances that aren't made to stop on a dime. The least vehicles are are a lot better designed for that. So whenever we don't need to go code three, we would prefer not to. So that's one of the extensions. Average scene time nationwide is about is about nine minutes, nine to ten minutes. So so that that's within, they're both within within reasonable, okay?
I'd like to say that I'm not hearing bad, so that's good. I I I think obviously y'all are doing a good job. Y'all feel happy with us?
Absolutely. We're very happy. One of the things I was going to add to is we just added a a local manager. She lives here. One of the big concerns that we had when we were first coming in and talking to you guys last April or was that we wouldn't be able to get staff here right now. Only two of our staff come from out of town. And and those are they're both paramedics. And we provide we're providing paramedic level service about ninety percent of the time. Again, the contract costs for BLS, basic level. But we we staff with medics because it's the right thing to do and it's and it's good. And we have the ability to do it. We have people who live here that are paramedics that that want to work here. So that's been a that's been a huge thing that helps. It also helps on response times and things like that because these people know the community. At first, we were worried that we were gonna and and I think everybody was concerned that we were gonna bring in a bunch of people from El Paso and and staff everything. And that that just never happened. Once once we once we evaluated the the region's pay and came back with a similar pay or a higher, then we were able to staff. So that that's been a huge part to helping all these numbers.
Any other questions? Mary, you have any questions?
None. Just keep doing a good job.
And thank you for what you are. And our next discussion will be the Alpine Volunteer Fire Department Report by Fire Chief Andrew Parrish.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. Sorry, still getting over that thing that went through town. So I wasn't able to get a packet in at times. I've been sick and really busy with that telecommunicator thing that y'all seen Daryl talk about. So what I've got is a couple notes here. I'm going to read off to y'all. The big thing here is this quarter is never usually our super busy quarter. So instead of focusing highly on the calls, I'm going to focus on what we've done with our staff. And the theme of this has been training and everything. So recently, we got all of our members CPR certified. I myself got Save the Bleed certified as an instructor, so I can provide that service to the city and county as needed. And I'm also working on getting my EMT instructor to provide free EMS instruction to all of our firefighters. So everyone on the department can be EMS certified because our members aren't paid. They're paid a stipend. It's not very much, so I want to give them something tangible they can take with them throughout the rest of their life. And an EMS license is one of those things. It's, you know, you probably ask Walter, it's it's guaranteed employment across the country because everyone needs EMS personnel. So having that extra level of training for my staff is is highly imperative to me. What I want to point out is right now, we are sitting at twenty-one firefighters. So we have twenty-one CPR certified with their full heart into it firefighters ready to serve the city of Alpine at all times. So this is one of the largest amounts of personnel we've had in since I joined the department almost ten years ago. So we've we've really got to flush out staff with that. We recently had one of our EMTs and firefighters promoted to captain. He was a lieutenant Zachary Davis. And we also have a new face. James Etchison was promoted to lieutenant at a fire department business meeting. We've been steady with our personnel numbers. We haven't had any turnover. We've had a lot of new people come in and people stay. So that's really good. I want to touch on Hermian Road Safety Coalition donated large amounts of rescue gear, putting mini jaws, some safety equipment, like some vests and LED lights, rescue lights, all kinds of equipment that really helped us from blowing out our budget on buying this equipment that we would have otherwise had to spend our budget on or our department fund on. In addition, I'm talking to the Rio Cog in reference to our truck mobile radios. So in all of our fire trucks, we have radios as well as our personnel are given radios to take with them to calls. The truck radios are severely outdated to the point where unless someone is talking on the EMS and fire channel in analog, we cannot hear them. So we go out into the county. We can't reach Brewster County at all. They have no way to hear us and we have no way to hear them except on our mobile radio. So I was able to kind of band-aid that situation by getting mobile radios purchased from Jessica Scudder very quickly and get those programmed. So that way, if we are on a fire scene, we can still communicate with SO out in the county. But that's one of our big issues right now that I'm trying to get because to me, that's a huge safety issue. I also wanted to note that we assisted APD in handing out water to residents during the boil water notice. We had many of our people there. Emergent Air had people there. Building official was there. We had everyone out there willing to help and put their back into it. So I wanted to thank my people for coming out, coming out and helping us with that situation. We reinstated a tradition of having the end-of-year banquet. We also invited Marathon Fire Department because to us, there is much a part of our department as we are of them because we work very closely together, given our geography and the types of calls we respond to. So they were very happy. It was a great team building experience and we were able to get a lot of people get some awards for their service for the year. We had good food and lots of food. I was my my belt went down a notch at night and our personnel were also on scene for art walks. So we had two of our EMS certified personnel in our ATV unit stationed out there to assist, provide public information, everything like that. We had had a conversation with the Art Walk Director prior to, so they were very grateful for that. Something I want to notice was the Lions Club in the American Legion donated money for new sets of gear. So we both, we now have two new sets of gear also in the works, which is incredible because like y'all know, the last time we got gear was through the September eleventh federal grant. So getting this will help replace old gear. I gave the first round of gear to all my people because I want them to be prepared for the situation. So this one, it looks like I'll be getting a new set of gear, so that'll be nice. Additionally, we had a dump fire. That was our significant fire here at the city landfill, all the way out on the highway on East Ninety. That was a pretty intense fire that took a lot of resources. We had Marathon out there as well. No one got injured. We got the fire out, well, to a point that it would just burn safely because there was no there was no sense in wasting water on putting that out if it was contained and it wasn't a harm to anyone. Additionally, we attended Red Ribbon Week to provide outreach to members of the public and the children. We were able to go over the trucks with them, show them all our equipment and, you know, tell them what we do because most people don't know that fire department responds to wide variety of stuff. We have fire in the name, but we do just about everything underneath that. And on our other deal, we're awaiting quotes from Deco. We I was able to go down to Lubbock to tour their facilities. If y'all don't know, Deco is a fire equipment supplier and also emergency vehicle technicians. So while the city yard can change the oil on the trucks, these people can fix the pumps, can do all the fire apparatus related things to it with certified personnel. So I was able to go out there, see their facilities, talk to their people. And I'm waiting to see about a vehicle service program about some kind of regular maintenance on the vehicles. So that way, we keep all of our trucks in perfect working order. They are getting older, so as we do that, we want to make sure to keep up with the maintenance so they keep running for longer. Finally, my last few notes. We provide for this entire year, we provide a cooperation with Emergent Air EMS, assist with incidents and critical calls. So anytime they have a critical call, we will I'll respond to help. I we I went to a call last night, actually, where they had a critical call. They needed assistance. We go out there because we all work as one team, you know, just like before where we had West Texas A and M Service. Just because we're all different entities doesn't mean we can't work together. So we go out there, we help them out, and we have a great working relationship with Emergent Air and their personnel. A significant amount of their personnel is actually on our department as well. And on top of that, we consistently provide a support and cohesion with local agencies. We've assisted APD numerous times. Brewster County Sheriff's Office, EMS, DPS, and surrounding emergency responders. So if we get a call from someone saying they need assistance because they don't have personnel or they need extra resources, we will go out there and assist them. Because it's all about getting the job done and that I I want to make sure that everyone is safe and everyone goes home at night. So if they need extra hands, I'll send extra hands. Finally, we had twenty-two fire calls for the quarter. None of these were incredibly guess we would say large besides the dump fire. These were all kind of routine calls. But besides that, we've been working on training all of our individuals and kind of getting getting everyone into their home. So with that, that's kind of my report. If anyone has any questions, kind of went through that a little quick so y'all know that to sit here and hear me ramble.
Y'all have any questions? Mary, do you have any questions?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thanks again. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
And our next discussion item is a presentation by Robert Schmidt regarding the estimation of water bills.
Good evening. First of all, I'm Robert Schmidt. I live in Ward four. And I would like to thank Councilman Andate for putting me on the agenda so I can address you all. What I would like to tell you about is my experience with the water department over a number of years, actually, but more recently, the last couple of months. I've been a property owner in Alpine for twenty-nine years. And twelve years ago, I built a house on the south side. I live at four one four South Berkeley and I built my own house. So I was present when the water meter was put in and I observed all of that all over the years. I've been living in that house for eleven years now. The first nine years went very well. Have no complaints about that. But in the last three years, I've had three meters. And so two years ago, that was a summer two years ago, my water bill went out of sight. So I went to the the city office and asked about that. And I must say, over my experience in the last three years, when a citizen goes to the office to inquire about that kind of overage, what appears to be an overage, there's a lot of pushback and a lot of resistance and a lot of difficulty in communicating with the staff. Now, I know the city manager talked earlier on about training that's going on. I'm glad to share that because my experience has been that rather than the staff suggesting, Mr. Schmidt, I'm sorry for having a problem. Let's talk about it. See what we can do. It's much more in terms of like an inability to talk about the subject. So I've had to be very assertive in getting through the various employees and department personnel in order to improve the situation. And I must say, because of the a meeting I had with city manager just a few weeks ago, I'm now able to read my own meter, which is a solution for me. It's a short-term solution to the problem. But generally, I would like to speak about what has consistently been a problem over time. I know you all have addressed this before in an article in the Alpine Avalanche on the sixteenth of November. There was discussion about y'all having addressed this issue in the meeting that preceded that that article coming out. And then also, I've before you, I think you should have. And then also, um, I've before you, I think you should have two copies of letters that I. Um, had in the avalanche. They're dated um December fifteenth and December. Twenty-two. I'm not going to go over those, but they do kind of summarize some of what I'm going to say here today. And then also you should have copies of my October water bill. And my uh November water bill. So in the October water bill, um, what was really unusual about this bill is that. It was five thousand gallons over a ten day period, you know, which is five hundred gallons a day. I'm a bachelor. I live alone. Uh, I don't use a lot of water. In fact, I actually harvest water. I have five thousand gallons. Of water from last summer sitting at my house. Now that I'll use the irrigate next summer. So my water usage is very low. So when I saw this bill, five thousand gallons over ten days, I came to the office and then it's like I say, I got a lot of. Uh, well, first of all, I went to um. The gentleman, Mr. Sager, that uh is uh in charge of the meters and all that kind of thing. And he said he couldn't do anything about it and I should come to the city office and talk with. Ms. Rodriguez and ask for something called a um special read on. So when I came to the office uh and talked about the situation, the explanation was very complicated. And uh, uh, very difficult to understand. In fact, I never completely understood how they could. Uh, give me a water bill based on ten days. It was five thousand gallons. And I'm not going to try to explain what their explanation was. You all can go back and try to understand that. Uh, if you want to talk with them about it. So what, what happened after, after that? Was that I began reading my meter every day. So, so for the next thirty days. Which took me into the December or to the November uh time period, I read my meter on a daily basis. And it averaged about forty gallons a day. And I researched throughout the United States, average usage for individuals is anywhere from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty gallons typically. And uh I used approximately forty uh gallons a day during that time period. So when my, when my uh. When my uh November bill came out, you'll see the copy of it. There's nine thousand gallons. So at that time, I, I went and I spoke uh with Miss Rodriguez about that and. Again, there was difficulty in trying to communicate my need and um. So at some point she agreed to do a uh a special read on. This was on a Monday. And I said, when will you know about that? And she said later in the week. So by Friday morning, you know, I had appointments over the weekend. So I. Thought I would come back because I hadn't heard anything from her. So I went to the office on that following Friday morning and uh. Again, there was resistance and pushback. In fact, when I asked to see her, she came. Forward and looked at, at me as if she had never seen me before. So I had to inquire, have you, have you. Gotten some information about my usage? And she walked away. So I turned to the clerk and I said, where is she going? And the clerk said she's going to get your file. And I said, oh, okay. That's just another example of how I think. Uh, there needs to be a little bit more emphasis on um. I guess uh. The, the way that staff address residents. At any rate, when she came back with the information, she said. Yes, we over, we're going to give you credit for seven thousand gallons. And I said, great. That's wonderful. So, but she didn't know when she was going to be able to do it and she wasn't able to say that next month my bill would be correct. So in the meantime, I had a meeting with city manager. And in that meeting, again, she addressed the issue of the seven thousand gallon overage. And I was glad to hear about that. And they were going to make a correction, which turns, turned out to be like twenty-three dollars and some change. Which I have since received and I appreciate that. And um. But what she couldn't do is let me know that my next month's bill would be accurate. And I didn't quite understand that. So I suggested that I read my own bill and eventually she agreed to that. So there were. Were several things that I felt like were progress in terms of my ability to read my own meter. And, and maybe get an accurate reading when the time the bill came out. So. And I have actually done that. Yesterday I read my meter. I mailed it in. Ms. Rodriguez has emailed me back that she received that information and I'm looking forward. To the fact that in the future my bill will be correct. But I know this is an issue throughout the city. I'm not the only one with this kind of complaint. So that's part of where I want to address here is how there might be some way for y'all to ensure that the bills be. More correct in the future. And I think it depends on uh. Accurate readings and, and good communication. One of the things city manager and I did not agree on. Or the fact that communication mi- might need to be improved between Mr. Sager, if he replaces the meter. And uh, the billing department. In other words, a red flag goes up. This, this meter has been replaced. Therefore, if you use estimates from the past, they're going to be inaccurate because the meter was wrong. So to me, that seems to be a easy kind of communication. Uh, city manager disagreed with that. She thought it was an additional. Work procedure that would make for additional work. To me, you'll see in one of these letters, I suggest that that be city policy. If there's uh. If there's a manager or a department head that has information that's going to benefit someone else, that. That should be part of policy to transmit and have that kind of communication. Well, that's one of the things I'm pushing for. So my problem has been solved in that I can go out and read my meter every month. And hopefully be charged an accurate amount at the time. But I did want to. Let you all know what my experience had been. And I didn't tell you about the other meter that had been replaced in the meantime. I said I've had three meters. In the last nine years, but those three meters have come in the last three years. So. There was another incident that occurred last summer when uh. My, again, my water bill went out of sight. I addressed Mr. Sager. Uh, I eventually had to prove to him. Uh, after reading my meter, telling him what it was, and then he sent somebody out. He replaced the meter on the same day. But then in the fall, then again, the, the building, buildings, the billings went out of sight. And I think that's based on. The system of using estimates, which is a good system if you have accurate history from the past. So that's what I'm advocating is that some way to improve communication and in order to. And make sure that the averaging system based on the estimates be based on. Meters that have a history of accuracy, not just the old information. I appreciate your listening to me and I'm glad that. I personally have a way to solve my own problem and that's to read my own meter. Send it in, get the information back from uh Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any question for? Thank you again for your presentation and I'm glad the issue's been fixed for now. Or perhaps for Ellen. Okay, then we'll move to information item number four. Which is this discussion over events from a water leak at the federal courthouse over the holiday weekend. And this is going to be from Counselor Stone.
When all this happened, you know, I called Megan. We all had fun. Um. Like to thank the worker bees. You know, I agree with Megan. We were all sitting at home. Everything was wonderful. Um, I would like to be the council that fixes these water pipes, fixes these roads. But we can't do it with the budget we have. So. I, I think we're in for some tough decisions of do we go out for a loan? Do we go out for bonds? If we get loans, then we can meet matching grants. There's many options available. If I had the water problems at my home that we have in Alpine. I would finally, after eighteen or twenty years, I would either go to the bank, I'd call the sheriff, I'd borrow money and I would fix my, my house. This is our house. We're going to have to fix it. And I, I, I think we've all heard we're gonna, but we want to. Let's go get a street department to fix the streets after we tear them up. There's ways to do this. And that's, that's my opinion. I also was informed on Sunday, we were offered free water and it was turned down. I don't know by who. But I don't think you get offered water in the desert and turn it down. So. That, that, that was going all over. That, that was the main thing I got. I think everybody worked together. I stood there and watched those kids. And they were kids. So these are not adult men down in this hole with water. They're sopping wet and water up to their waist. Now, I didn't get down in there and help them, but I had on the cutest little boots. They got muddy and that's a true story. Jerry saw me. I looked great and.
It was a beauty queen on the water.
We were there for moral support. But you know, it, it was a very serious condition out there and, and no, I didn't feel right sitting at my house being warm while they're out there sopping wet. I'm surprised they don't have pneumonia. I do though, think that the citizens of Alpine are going to have to either pony up and help us or this is going to continue forever. And once they're fixed, it doesn't mean we're never going to have another water leak. But maybe we can get these big ones fixed. We now have fixed big ones. Megan told me we had a, did this thing, they can look and see what we fixed. Tell us what is the big one next probably fixing to happen. But I want, I would love to get a loan and be able to do it. And hire a street department and get these streets fixed. Quit depending on a company. Let our guys do it. But it's going to take money. So that's my spiel. Get, get ready because I think we need to be this council that will step up and do it. Quit talking about it. If it's riding with Megan's five-year plan. And that's, that's my opinion. Now, I don't know these people's opinion. I don't know y'all's opinion. I'm willing to pay a little bit more. I'm tired of it too. Everybody in Alpine, that's all we do is gripe about the streets and the water pipe. Water running down the road, then they tear up the street, then they can't fix the street and it's not the street guy's fault. They don't have the equipment. Until we give it to them. So just putting that in everybody's head because that's what I would like to. Come out of these five-year plans is let's get a plan. Let's stick to it and let's get this stuff fixed.
Hey, did you?
You're very welcome.
You have any comments for Judy?
No.
Mary, you have any comments?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I agree with you one hundred percent. We need to start working on that right away. The residents want it. We're going to have to pony up the money. We need to figure out how to get it done and we just need to do it this spring. Let's do it. Let's get it done. And would you tell me a little bit more about what happened? We turned down water? Was it bottled?
I was told we were off. I was told we were offered water on Sunday. And that they were told we didn't need it, that we, we could boil water. And that, that it was rerouted then through the West Texas Food Bank on Tuesday, the same water that was offered Sunday.
Okay, yeah, I agree with you. We don't turn down water in the desert. Yeah, so we need to. Fix whatever happened there and make sure that.
Other than that, I think everything went as well as it could possibly go. People were offering water. I could have gone and got water. My neighbor has a well. I walked and got some Tupperware jugs. I mean, you know, it wasn't. Of course, I forgot about the dog, you know, so Penny Lane drank water that wasn't boiled.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I know. It's earth shattering. She didn't get sick, so I started drinking coffee. I was like, I'm not getting this anymore, you know.
Right.
But I, I do think that we've got to do something. We've heard for years, I've lived there for years and we've heard for years, we're going to do it, we're going to do it and it never gets done.
Right, I agree.
It needs to be the council that does it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, then we'll move to discussion item number five. Which is discussion regarding the behavior of the city attorney, including comments made to the media. Taking action without authorization of the council or city manager and other performance issues. And this is an item that was placed on the agenda by Counselor Rodriguez, who unfortunately is not here tonight. So I'm suggesting that we make a motion to table this item indefinitely.
I'll make that motion.
Sure, second? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Raise your right hand. And then we'll move to item number six, which is discussion regarding the resignation of Utility Director Pete Sager. And any implication. And that was also an item placed on the agenda by Counselor Rodriguez. Who again, cannot be here tonight. So I am suggesting that we make a motion to table indefinitely this discussion item.
So.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say, put your right hand. Thank you. And then we'll move to the action item portion of the agenda. And the first action item is approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero one. In ordinance amending the city, amending the chapter eighteen of the Building and Building Standards Regulations to the Alpine Code of Ordinances. And I would entertain a motion for that.
I, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you and shame on us. Action item number two is approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero two. In ordinance amending the Alpine Code of Ordinances, amending chapter twenty-six Civic and Cultural Affairs and Facilities. Establishing Article Three Noise, adopting an ordinance providing for the requirements. And regulation concerning noise and its potential to become a public nuisance. And I would entertain a motion for that. I make a motion to approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash whole two. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Well, any discussion?
I, I agree. I don't know about these sensible things either. But I know Daryl does and I'm trusting his judgment with. That he's got it under control.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Action item number three is approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero three. In ordinance amending the Alpine Code of Ordinances, amending chapter three Administration. Amending Article Six Records Management. Providing for a reasonable limit on the amount of time to be spent without charge for vexatious public information requesters. And requiring payment for the time and expenditures incurred beyond this limit. And I would entertain a motion for that.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you and carries. And the action item number four, which is approve resolution twenty, resolution twenty twenty-three. Dash zero one dash zero one, a resolution establishing appendix B. Building services fees, creating a uniform fee structure for all building services and permanently. Pursuant to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero. And I would entertain a motion for that.
I'd second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say, raise your right hand. And it passes. And that brings us to agenda item number ten, which is the city council member comments. And we'll start with Councilor Andate.
I've got a, what was the size of that pipe? The, the leak, eight inches, eight inches?
The break was eight and a half feet. The pipe, I believe, was the twelve foot.
I think it was a, Keith thought it was twelve, but we measured it. I think we came up with eight.
And the depth?
It was at least six feet, wasn't it?
Let me look. Yeah. I didn't have a ladder to get down in.
We had a ladder, but the, the top of ladder was right at the top of the hole.
The top of the hole, bottom was all underwater.
Yeah.
I don't know.
But it was. It was crazy. And then when the first time we put the uh couplings on, they leaked and then water was shooting everywhere. I had to take, where they had to take them off, start all over again. Was the third try, we finally got them?
It was a law. I don't know. It has to fit just right. You can't just put them on and pray. They have to land it perfectly.
And we had thought about adding a city enter- entertainment area and freezing the lake that came out of the hole and providing ice skating. But that didn't go over very well.
No, it didn't.
Any comments, Sarah?
Um, I'd like to thank um the police department for all that they do. And I really like your cards all around town. I've gone to several businesses and your cards look really great. Everybody's posted your, your Christmas card. And I also want to thank Mr. Wilson and the community band. Um, that was a great Christmas program. It was a little chilly outside, but there was a great, great turnout for that. And the attendance was wonderful and everything was really well organized. It wa- it was great to be there. So I want to thank the community band for. And the attendance was wonderful and everything was really well organized. It wa- it was great to be there. So I want to thank the community band for. For being out there in the cold and and entertaining, you know, our town. It was a great place and a great, a great time to do it. It was fun.
Judy?
I thank the worker bees. You know, we talk about these men that got down this hole. These were a bunch of kids and. And when you stand there and watch them, you know, you think, oh, hope they don't lose a finger. That's what I was worried about. And they did a great job. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for the presentations. I know that's so fun to come up here and give us those. Uh, can't believe Wyatt has actually grown up enough to do anything. But he did great. So. And good luck Alexis. You know, I worked with Alexis. Um, when I was at the sheriff's office and she's so smart. And you know, I always thought, how long before she takes off? How long before she goes somewhere? So like, she's going to make some good money now. Uh, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for your, I agree, I've had, I've had messed up order bills. I think a lot of the problem now. Is getting employees and keeping them. Once COVID hit and everybody went home. Everybody didn't come back to work. And now nobody wants to work. And we're seeing that across the nation. It's not just Alpine. It's not just Texas. It's everywhere. And so the people we do have, like Megan says, we need to reward them and keep them. And train them to handle these problems better. Um, of course, when you get to Megan, then everything gets cleared up and it's wonderful. Um. I hope that Mayor, I hope you feel better. Thank you for not home infecting me.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I just want to wish everyone a happy new year. And seeing Greg and our. Student to be judge, I don't think you've been sworn in yet. Have you, Greg?
Yes, he has.
Oh, has he? Okay.
I have, I have a picture on my phone.
I look forward to the city and the county working together in twenty twenty-three and on into the future. And I appreciate all the participation and all the. Things that we do as a council to make this city the best it can be in small town West Texas. And we are adjourned at seven oh five.
Yes.